Order, it's five thirty. Can I have everyone rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so before we start the meeting, I wanted to read something. On behalf of the city council and our city treasurer, I want to reaffirm our shared commitment to a safe, respectful, and welcoming community. We condemn all forms of political violence, whether physical harm, intimidation, or threats, regardless of viewpoint or party. Our democracy depends on an open dialogue, civic participation, and peaceful exchange of ideas. We stand together in supporting the rights of every resident to speak, assemble, and disagree without fear. We encourage everyone to channel their passion for our community into constructive engagement and mutual respect. Violence has no place in our city. We will continue to work with our public safety partners, community leaders, and residents to ensure that our government remains a space where all voices can be heard safely and respectfully. At this moment, I would ask to invite everyone to bow their heads in silence for a few moments to honor those lost to political violence. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item number two, changes to the agenda.
I have none, Mayor.
Council? All right, number three, council's approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes. Moving on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations, I see none. Item number three, citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open leaning laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for us follow-up and report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included into the record. However, they will not be read. Do you have any citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to public hearings. Four point one is gonna be to introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance number eight seven four, amending the planning and zoning code to implement four six-cycle housing element programs. Shaun?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight is a public hearing, and staff's recommending that council introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance eight seventy-four, which amends the plan and zoning code to implement four of the six-cycle housing element programs that were adopted. Basically, it's just kind of implementation of the housing element that the the city had adopted over about a year ago, back in May of twenty twenty-four. And so basically, the different programs have to do with water and wastewater services, promote and facilitate accessory units, and some other various zoning code elements, and then also land use controls, including related to density bonus law. And then also there's a notice of exemption in terms of the environmental review for these particular elements. These are essentially state-mandated changes. As we know, the housing element's always an interesting topic of discussion because it seems to be basically imposed upon the city to adopt this program and this particular element of our general plan. And with, as part of that, are programs and implementation measures that have to go with the housing element that the city is supposed to follow. And these are all, this is all information provided by the state. As we know, the housing element has to be certified by the state, so when we adopt this document, it typically has to be to the satisfaction of the state of California. It's not something that the city has, you know, full control as we do in other elements of our general plan. And so a lot of the changes in the ordinances that you see here in this document are basically culmination of the hundreds of housing bills that have been passed in the last couple of years. Basically, as we've noticed, you know, reducing land use control from the city, being able to adopt housing regulations based on what fits Kalinga. Housing regulation now at the state level seems to be what fits the state as a whole, not necessarily at the local level, which we've seen those land use controls go away. So we've basically made the, we've made the recommended changes based on changes in the state law that are required and mandated, not necessarily trying to make any arbitrary changes without kind of going vetting through that process. So as you see through, you know, definitions, residential care facilities, low-barrier navigation centers, employee and farmworker housing, and emergency shelters. It also, we talk about Housing Element Program Twenty-One, which is basically land use control, which is kind of just offering changes in variety of lot sizes to meet certain densities that are required by state law. And that basically is affected through all different zoning designations. And then also all the density bonus law updates that have occurred through these housing programs and housing laws that have changed at the state level. So with that, Mayor, this is a public hearing. If there's any questions you have on the changes, but again, these are basically just, we've gone through and verified state statute and made the changes to our local ordinances to make sure they're consistent with state law.
Do you have any questions or comments from council before I open the public hearing?
So this just looks like you're just readjusting the verbiage to match with the state of California is now, right?
Yes.
Still the same, but with their added in.
Yeah, cuz there's a lot of, lot of regulations that the state have made and established, which typically have always been at the local level, where you've been able to have that control. Where we've seen with the hundreds of housing bills that have passed in the last few years, it's really getting into the realm of land use and local control, and that's been a big fight, obviously. You know, at the League of California Cities, when we go to conferences and have a, we're having a lot of those arguments right now that we're losing that land use control and local control at the local level.
I got a couple real quick. I'm confused on a couple of these. One of them is the residential care facility. In it, is that something that can be built in a residential neighborhood now? Is that what they're saying there?
It's essentially making it a residential use, so it can be converted, a residential care facility, yes, it can be.
So in a housed area, somebody could decide to convert their, their house into a residential care?
Yes, it's very similar to the, what, where the state made changes related to family daycares. Where family daycares, we used to require permits. Now they are considered, what they constitute, a residential use by right, which means, you know, just normal, it's just an accessory to a house, to a, to residential living, essentially.
Yeah, we've had a few of them over the years. The last one we had was just right over here around the corner, the big yellow house.
Yeah, I was just looking for clarification on that. And, you know, I mean, there's concerns that come along with that, like traffic, people coming and going, visiting and whatnot. So there's no city ordinance that would override any, any of these things?
No, it's kind of like adopting the building code. We typically adopt it by reference because it's that thick, and it's like six volumes. So we adopt it by reference, but there's not a lot of changes you can do. All you can be is more stringent, not less stringent. Or less stringent, not more stringent, sorry.
Kind of the same thing for the farmworker employee housing? Is that the same scenario? Somebody in their neighborhood could decide to convert their home?
I have to look at the, which page are you on, on that one? Cuz I know there's definitions.
It's just one of the bullet points right below zoning, zoning code amendments, housing element modifications are modified.
Oh, and the definition? Oh, that's just the, so in the, in the actual ordinance itself, it's just a modification to the, to the, to the definitions. So the state tends to change the definitions of these things, like density bonus or, you know, low-barrier navigation centers or residential care facilities. They change the term, and so all we're doing is aligning with the new term, so it's consistent.
So this can be built in a residential area?
Um, farmworker.
Cuz they're talking about twelve units, up to thirty-six beds, kind of stuff here.
It can be if it's considered multifamily, yes, it can, yeah. But some of it's maybe like in ag districts. I'd have to look and see specific, so any of the changes for farmworker housing.
It's farmworker and/or employee housing, so I mean, that could be abused in a lot of ways.
Yeah, and I don't know if any of that changed in our code in terms of residential housing. I think that may already be consistent. Because technically, like, farmworker housing, it has kind of multiple definitions because we have, you know, even like Worthy Place Apartments, the most recent phase has a component of farmworker housing in it. It's basically where it's more geared, when they use that term, a lot of times it's for the, on the affordability tag. So like, there's certain funding sources that really go towards farmworker applicants. So like, there's Joe Serna money that you can apply for as a developer and build housing, that then only applicants that are farmworkers are eligible for housing. And that's, there's a small component of the Worthy Place Apartments Phase Two that receives some of that funding. And so they had a certain amount of units that had to be eligible for farmworkers. So in order to be an eligible applicant to live in a particular unit, you had to be, you had to be a farmworker.
But this does apply to residential areas, too.
Yes, but it's not like what you see on like ranches, that kind of housing. It's more like the person that's living there has to be.
That's the concern, yeah, like labor camp.
It's just the applicant, it's really geared towards affordable housing, so it's really the applicants that are, when you're doing subsidized housing, particular applicants have to be eligible for those types of, for that type of housing. So it could be a single-family unit, but if it's being, if it has any kind of affordability tag, there's, and it's, they're utilizing funding that requires that, then the applicant would have to be a farmworker in order to get the, in order to rent that space.
That's all I have, thanks.
Any other questions from council before I open up the public hearing? All right, so I just want to make a comment. Any voting that I do will be under complete duress. This is a horrible, horrible ordinance. It's, it's bad to the core. We're basically taking away local control from ourselves because of a dictator government that is controlled specifically by one party and has been by, for two decades. They control every asset, aspect of it. And so I'm a hundred percent against almost everything in here that's written in red. I'm not gonna go through it because there's nothing we can do about it because I've been told that if we do anything about it, that we can be sued because this is basically the state's language. I don't agree with the fact that the state is forcing us to do an ordinance. Why don't the state just put, force the ordinance if that's what the case is and take away us from having to approve it? That being said, I'm gonna open up the public hearing to the public. So, anyone have any comments to the public hearing? Seeing none, closing the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from council before I entertain a motion? Right, it doesn't.
How long do we have to get this done?
I'd have to look back at the housing element, but there is a certain timeline that we, that you, we establish in the housing element that these amendments have to be done. Because currently, right now, our code doesn't comply with state laws, so we can't implement what's currently in our code. We have, so it just has to be consistent with state law. So you're basically just kind of adopting by reference, essentially. It's about, I think that, it was about a year to two years, I think, that the code had to be implemented.
All right, so I will go ahead and, under duress, entertain the motion, I will create the motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
It's in motion and approved, all those, do we have to do a roll call vote on this?
As long as you can tell who it is, so if there's a.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, four zero, motion passes. Gonna move on to the consent calendar. Item number, we have seven items. Is there anything from council you guys like to pull? All right, I guess I just wanna pull item number seven, just for information. Just for the public to, cuz I've been getting some concerns about this, so.
Mercedes, do you wanna give a quick update on that? Thanks.
So the charging stations installed behind City Hall were actually provided by Fresno County Government's World Transit Agency. Unfortunately, the juice box manufacturer stopped serving North America in October of twenty twenty-four. There was a software developer that took over the operation of their app. However, if you did not have it installed prior to the, them no longer serving North America, you can no longer use those at this time. Staff has been working on this because it is part of the Envision Twenty-Two-Five project list. And I've been working with ChargePoint. Their software cannot be installed into the juice boxes. So we're looking at the site now to see if, to remove those and get some funding cost for that, to upgrade those stations. And they look to get that in December or January to the council with a site update and if it's something that's doable with ChargePoint or any other chargers that may have grant funding available with them.
And do you know which portion of the Fresno Council of Governments is the one that approved these originally and put them in?
I believe it was a grant under Fresno County Road Transit Agency. But it was some time ago, so I'm not absolutely certain if my memory serves me correctly.
Okay, and have we reached out to FCR TA to see what their take is on this? I'm sure that since they did this with us, they probably have multiples that are out there that have this issue.
I have had some dialogue, but no successful resolution.
Okay, well, since I'm on the FCTRA as well, I will, I will reach out to them and find out at the next COG meeting what else can, can we do? That way, we could see if there's any replacement options from FCR TA, if that would be, that'd be okay with you?
Oh, I appreciate that, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, if, in a way, when they get fixed, is there a way we can move them to the parking lot? Maybe they could be more used whenever they get repaired or whenever that time comes, we could use them, utilize them here where more people could see them? Or is it just?
It's probably not feasible. We spent probably fifteen thousand dollars, if not more, to upgrade all the, to upgrade the panel here at City Hall, as well as do that. And we probably have to do a pretty large upgrade at the parking lot cuz there's like a small panel from that old building.
Right, okay.
But once we get them up and running, we'll definitely get it out so people are aware of them. But yeah, we're just looking for funding. I know that Mercedes is trying to look at other grant funds cuz we received them for free last time, but the city paid for all the upgrades, all the electrical upgrades, which were pretty substantial for that area.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, can I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as written.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, consent calendar is approved. Moving on to item number six. Ordinance presentation, discussion, potential action items. Six point one is appeal hearing, administrative citation, one twenty-eight oh five, alleged possession and use of illegal fireworks.
I'll take that, Mayor, all under this item. This is for administrative citation one-two-eight-zero-five, which was issued to Mr. Shaun Benson of three oh two Dartmouth Avenue for alleged possession of illegal fireworks and use of fireworks in violation of the municipal code. On July twenty-third, Mr. Benson submitted a timely appeal and then asked for the appeal hearing to be moved, I believe he was out of town, to today, September eighteenth. How the appeal will proceed, I will enter this item, which I'm doing now. Then the city will present the evidence supporting the issuance of the citation. That'll be done by Battalion Chief Milligan. And then the appellant, Mr. Benson, will have five minutes to present his response and any supporting evidence. The city will have a rebuttal of three minutes. And then the appellant will have a maximum of five minutes to provide any closing remarks, as well as the city will have five minutes to provide their closing remarks. After that, the council will deliberate and come to a decision on whether to uphold, deny, or modify the appeal. Is there any questions from council about the procedure? And is Mr. Benson here?
So real quick. I do. Real quick, can you define what each one of those items entails, the uphold, deny?
So to uphold, well, to approve the appeal would be to agree with Mr. Benson. I'm assuming he's, will ask it to be modified or eliminated in some way. To deny the appeal will be to have the citation remain as it is. And I believe it's currently a thousand-dollar fine. And then the modification would be, if the council saw fit, to reduce or modify some other way the citation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mr. Benson, do you have any questions about the procedure? Okay, then if, if the mayor's unconclined, we'll get started. Okay, Battalion Chief.
Down on Dartmouth near North Klinga Street, I witnessed two juveniles enter the roadway, placed two black mortar tubes on the ground. As they saw my vehicle, they picked them up and walked back to the residence at three oh two Dartmouth Avenue. I approached the residence of three oh two Dartmouth and found several people outside, including Mr. Benson. I'm familiar with Mr. Benson over the last several years, uh, from the community. As I pulled up to the address, I told the kids to bring me the mortar tubes. Both juveniles looked at Mr. Benson. Mr. Benson seemed to nod to give approval. They turned them over without incident, and after that, I left the area. I also realized that there were actually two inch mortars in each tube, in the tubes. In accordance with, uh, municipal code section four dash eight point one-two-zero, it is unlawful to possess or use illegal dangerous, or dangerous fireworks in the city. The residents of three oh two Dartmouth mailed a letter along with a citation. Included in that letter was the reason for the citation. It was also included section four dash eight point one-three-zero regarding the process of appeal. And section four point, sorry, four dash eight point one-four-zero that define, defines the amount of the citation. And it also defines the responsible party as the person or persons who organize, supervise, sponsor, conduct, allow, controls or controls access to the illegal discharge of the, or possession of illegal fireworks. Mr. Benson was sighted that day even though the juveniles had the fireworks because he was in control of the property at that time. Any further questions that I can answer for you?
Yeah, were the juveniles, um, that were, were they his, uh, children or?
I do not know. I do not know. I know they were with the group of people, and like I said, when I approached them and asked for the tubes, I did witness both of the juveniles looked towards Mr. Benson. When he agreed, yes, give him the tubes, they turned them over without any further incident.
And was it to the juveniles that were the ones lighting off the fireworks, or was it, uh, Mr. Benson?
I did not witness anybody from this group actually light a firework.
Okay.
But they did have possession of the fireworks.
But it was the juveniles who had possession?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel?
Thank you.
Mr. Benson, if you'd like to come up and to the podium?
First, I'd like to ask, Justin was in the truck that night?
Yes, sir.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
Cause I don't record, I don't remember seeing you that night. There was another gentleman in the truck.
Yes, sir, there was a couple of the time tubes working on that.
We only seen one person in the truck. And like you said, that's, so the city owns how far? Where did you find them at?
Mr. Benson? Yeah, if you can, if you can address.
Where were they found at? I mean, they were in the street. So how does that make it mine?
So I think the time is for you to make a case that, uh, that, uh, you know, or is, is this for him to ask questions to him, or is it him to ma? I just wanna make sure we're, uh, we're, we're moving on the pro, on the exact process that we're supposed to.
Yes.
Cause we don't have answers, uh, for, for you, and I don't know what the process is if he wants to an, uh, ask the battalion chief questions.
Right, so this is the time for you to present anything that you have?
Well, I don't have nothing because it wasn't mine. Just because I was outside in the street, but it's a city street. It's not my residence. That's the city street where they found it. And the juveniles, I don't know who they were, but was I out there viewing them? Sure, but there was none lit off. He came and I don't think it was him that's in the truck. So, I mean, it's kinda perjury. But I don't know what gives you guys the right to send me a citation when you absolutely know proof it's mine. It was on city street, and even where it was put wasn't even on my property. I took pictures. There's a si- streetlight right there, and they stashed it behind the pole of the streetlight. So how's that make it mine? That's not even my lot. I, I'm flabbergasted and quite offended that I got the citation. Cause there's absolutely no proof, and they didn't ask me nothing. And not, I didn't really nod, I was the adult there, the senior adult, so. Obviously, and he said that if you don't give them to me, I'm gonna give you a thousand dollar citation. So what, what are we gonna do? But he didn't ask my name, ask my ID, ask me if they were mine, he didn't say nothing. The juveniles gave it to him, and he left. And I get this in the mail. And to be quite frank, I don't intend to paint it.
Do you have anything else for counsel?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can we ask questions?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, do you know the juveniles that were out in front? You don't know them at all?
I didn't, no, I didn't. I knew the ones, the neighbor.
And did you, okay, then I guess we can just be frank. Did you see who was sight, who was lighting off the, um, the mortars?
There was no legal fireworks. When he took them, there wasn't more to light off. We had the safe and sane.
I'm, I'm just asking a question, so if you were outside and you were with them, and you seen them, and you said you were watching them, did you see who actually lit them off? Because that was the reason he came over, is because he seen the.
There were, there were none lit off in my, in that street. When he, when he arrived, he took the ones that they had. And he didn't, they didn't have two, they only had one, but that's not.
So i- is it also your idea that those were the juveniles then, not yours? And do you know who the juveniles are?
I just answered it, no, I do not. Just the one neighbor.
So you do know one of them?
Julian, but yeah, that's all I know.
Okay, thank you.
So after they were, after the juveniles were seen with the tubes and supposedly grabbed them and headed back towards the residence and hid it, would, did they go to your residence, or did they go to the neighbor's residence?
The neighbor's residence. There's a, there's a l- streetlight pole that's actually on the neighbor's lot. They put it behind that pole. But it's not my lot, it's not my property. And that's where they retrieved them from when he put them.
Were you at the residence's house?
I was on my house on the lawn.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how the kids would end up, they're either at the neighbor's residence, or they were at your residence.
They were in the street. I mean, it, it's been done in previous years where they have fireworks out there. It's kind of a cul-de-sac.
Now, when they, uh, when the juveniles were questioned, uh, which residence were they at?
They were on the street.
They were in the street the, the entire time, even?
Well, they were standing in the driveway slash the neighbor's at that pole. But they weren't in my residence, so.
The.
And he actually didn't question them at all. He didn't question any of them. He took the fireworks and left. And my lady was standing there as well, I mean, she's my witness.
So the ticket wasn't written at that time?
Absolutely not. Didn't even ask my name.
So, so the neighbor's residence that you're saying they ran to, is that one of the juveniles' actual residence?
No, it's not their residence, no.
So they ran to someone else's house?
The lot next to me, but they didn't run to their house. They came back out the middle of the street, it's around in the street.
Well, a- all I'm asking is because you, you did say one of them was your neighbor.
Correct.
You identified one of the juveniles as your neighbor.
But it's not his residence.
So I wanted to.
He, he's friends.
I was just wondering why he wouldn't run to his house and not your house, but.
With the, uh, the neighbor's daughter. But no, they, nobody ran to the house, they went off the street to the sidewalk.
Okay. Sorry, I'm, I'm, we're just, we're just asking questions just to figure out.
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
She, uh, w- w- you were the one that, were the one that witnessed this?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Ramirez, can you direct your questions to Mr. Benson, and then, uh, Battalion Chief's gonna come back up in a minute.
So, uh, I believe your parents said it, um, um, Chief Milligan wasn't, wasn't there?
He wasn't.
He wasn't?
He was not.
Do you recognize the, the personnel that was, that came up?
I didn't recognize him, no. I think it was the gentleman that was sitting there before Justin was sitting there.
Okay.
But, but it definitely wasn't Justin.
Okay.
I'm quite confident in that.
And, and did this happen in front of your, your house, your block?
It did.
Okay. I'm, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but did, did you say that it wasn't even your block?
No, it was my block, it was in front of my house.
Okay.
Dartmouth turns and what's the street going this way?
At any point that the, the staff, um, asked for their address?
He didn't ask nothing.
Okay.
All he did was ask for the fireworks, a- and they were hesitant, and I kinda looked at him, like, give it to him. There was no nod like it was mine or something, but he, they took them, the fireworks, he left. The only thing he did say was that, well, if you don't give them to me, I'm gonna give you a thousand dollar citation. That's all that was said.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel, from Mr. Benson? Thank you, Mr. Benson. Battalion Chief?
Thank you, uh, to clarify a couple of things, yes, um, that evening, there was two battalion chiefs. Our trucks do, are close to identical about it. Uh, the other one was, uh, Battalion Chief Long and then myself. Um, it's flattering to maybe be confused with Battalion Chief Long, but it was myself that, uh, that witnessed this and ended up sending the citation. They, I don't have the demonstration of it now, but he is correct, he lives at the corner of, uh, Dartmouth and Nevada. It is a ninety-degree turn. The only driveway on that corner is for three oh two Dartmouth. The group of people that were standing outside was at the end of the driveway at three oh two Dartmouth, at the driveway. For the next two houses, there is not a driveway on the corner until you get all the way around to Nevada. So that is where I placed them at the address, and that is the address that I used. As far as retrieving the fireworks that day, that is correct. I did tell them they needed to, I needed to take the fireworks, or they are eligible for a thousand dollar ticket. Because I did not see them actively light them at that moment, my thought process, because of the, how busy we were that day, was that I would just confiscate them. After that, after fully, further looking at the ordinances and realizing that the possession themselves of it, of the fireworks is cause for those tickets, the citations, that's when I ended up mailing the citation as per the municipal code that says I could do so to the address of the person involved with that party. Any other questions?
So you were just trying to use your own discretion at the time, just to?
At the time, yeah, there was, uh, I think we had, shortly after that, or right around that time, there was fire engines going over to a structure fire at the time, and I was just, I saw it happen. I picked them up and I was moving on.
So, um, real quick, do you, you never asked anybody for ID or names in either the, the juveniles or the property owner?
I am familiar with Mr. Benson and his residence.
But you never?
I did not.
Never asked?
Ask for that, I've seen, no, I did not.
Okay.
And by chance, did we get the, uh, any of the identifications of the juveniles that were there?
No, I did not.
Okay. And I just wanna understand this correctly, so we did not see anybody light them off? And they were in front of, but were they in the shitty street, or were they in the, in the driveway?
When I saw the tubes being placed, it was in the center of the street or close to the center of the street. As I approached, when they picked them up, they walked with them back to that driveway. That's where I stopped in front of and asked for the mortar tubes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief, but it was you?
Yes, sir, it was me.
It was, it was you that confiscated the, the items?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any further questions from counsel? Thank you, Battalion Chief.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Benson, if you have any closing remarks, you can make them at this time, we have five minutes.
I, do you know Justin? And I, I will still swear it was not him in the truck. I will, I can subpoena the one guy, Julian, I know. They're the ones that got the fireworks. He was not in the truck that night, I know Justin well. He used to be my neighbor on Curtis. I've known him for years. And I don't know exactly, I'm a little confused what's going on here, but I, it was not him in the truck. And no, there was no ID asked for, there was nothing. And they did not go in my driveway. I don't know if you recall, they put them behind the streetlight pole, which is actually in my neighbor's lot. That's where they come, were we all standing kind of in my driveway? Well, it depends on how you classify ownership. Doesn't the city own how far from the street?
I think it's a little bit of both, the city owns so much into the property, and the property owner owns so much into the city.
Correct.
So it's, it's kind of a wish wash.
My point is, how's that make it mine? And there was none lit off. There was none lit off previous to that. We just started the show. And when he took them, they, there was no one of the legal ones. They were never lit off.
Anything further, Mr. Benson?
No, that's fine.
Thank you. Battalion Chief, do you have any, uh, closing remarks? Okay, so now it's time for counsel deliberation, uh, and a decision.
Counsel? So I guess I can start off. If no one, if someone has something, then go first, if not, I can lead it, then?
Yeah, I, I, I'll get some stuff.
Um, you know, I'm not a judge or anything, but as far as I can see, obviously, job was being done here, he did witness, uh, illegal possession. But unfortunately, they were juveniles, and no names were gathered. And because they ran across other property, that doesn't make that property owner in possession at any time, as far as I can see. So, you know, the question is, is there reasonable doubt? And, and I feel like there is.
Go ahead. Would this also, would this be somewhat considered the same as hearsay? Because it was filed later, days after?
No, the, since the battalion chief was the one who witnessed it and wrote the citation, it's perfectly fine.
And, and as well as witnessed, witnessed the residence that was there?
Well, if he knows the residence, I mean, it's, it's not necessarily, there's no hearsay.
Right.
I'll let the mayor decide.
Yes.
The citation was delivered that night.
But, but was it delivered to him though, or no? In the mail, okay. Okay, perfect. So because I did allow him to say something, if you guys wanna say something, you can.
Yeah, so if. Ma'am, if you'd like to speak, you can come up to the podium.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, would you like to say anything since I allowed? No? Okay, we'll move on then.
So, um, you know, I mean, he, he was, he, just, just in, in order, you know, Chief Battalion was doing a job that, that is, that comes with his, with his work. Other things, yeah, it wa, I mean, it, it, wherever the, the, the canisters were, um, we said it, they were on the street, or were they behind the light? Where you recovered them, if I may ask?
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah.
So, when I pulled up to the, in the street, when I asked them, they brought them to me. I did not see where they retrieved them from. But I saw them coming down, pick them up, and then when I asked for them, they brought them to me.
Okay. Yeah. And there's, I don't know if, if Mr. Benson has, you know, notified Julian's family about the situation. They, they were basically, I mean, they're not coming from his, his property, I mean, but Chief was doing his job. It just, it's kind of hard, you know, and we understand both sides. We do. Yeah, you're concerned as a, as a citizen. Chief is just doing his job. It's just, it's, it's, it wasn't on your property. Didn't come out of your property. And these kids were running, and they are juvenile. That's one thing.
So the reason for the ticket having to be mailed was because of the other four fires, correct?
Because I was not spending time there that morning.
Okay, so I think that this is the exact reason we have these appeal hearings. I don't like the way the ordinance is set up. The ordinance is set up the way it is to be very broad so that we can have some leadway in this. And I know that our fire department does their best to make sure that these ordinances are enforced as this is so important to council and to the residents, who this year we really made a zero tolerance on this. And so I very much appreciate all the work that Justin and all the rest of the fire people have done. Now, in the, in the, the appeal, I think the reason for this is that when certain things fall out of the, when it falls, when it's legitimately done, and hey, we gave the ticket to who we thought we did, and then they come and appeal it, and then we listen to information from both sides. What I'm hearing is, is that both people are saying that, you know, you didn't witness anyone light anything off. And that he says also that, that he didn't witness anyone light anything off. And then we both are hearing that the juveniles were the ones that were in the street with the fireworks on both angles. So I think that that's where possession lies, is with the juveniles. And I do also agree that the city's street could be dominated by anyone, and the cul-de-sac could be a perfect place to let them off. And I know that we're, most people in this room would probably be guilty of watching fireworks if they're being let off. I mean, you know, some may call on it and some may watch it, but I think that's what happens. And I know that we're on a zero-tolerance path of this because of all the fires that happened, and we did have multiple fires that night. And it could have been a lot worse. And this is one of the parts of the ordinance that I just don't like because, but it also, since we have it like that, we also allow for an appeal, which you've done. And so myself, I'm inclined to, to say that I would like, my personal self, I would like to accept the appeal. And on this one, not because we didn't do our jobs and not because of all of that, that we, that we set this forward, but because I don't think we have enough evidence to prove that the, Mr. Benson was in possession of the fireworks. And we actually have evidence to prove that the juveniles were in possession of that. And so that would be what I think, but I'm always open to listen to what else council has to say as well. So I pretty much agree with what Councilman Schindler was talking about.
Yeah, I agree with that. These are hard enough cases to prove already. I mean, you know, to see them, see them light it off, it's dark, and to get the person that did it. But, you know, when you have, when you have no IDs, we do know it was juveniles and, and, you know, it's, it's one of those things where I, yeah, I'm inclined to.
So I think we've deliberated. Unless council has any more deliberation, what's the next step in the process?
So then you need a motion to either approve the appeal, which would be decided with Mr. Benson, to deny it, which would be decided with the city and the, and the current citation, or to modify.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the appeal.
I'll second.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded. Let's get a roll call vote.
Mayor Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Schindler?
Aye.
Councilman Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Protimhorn?
I vote aye.
We appreciate you coming. Your, your appeal has been approved. Thank you. And I do want to follow this up with, the fire department did everything that they should have done and that this is why we have the appeals, appeals process. And I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming in. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to item number six point two, direction to staff regarding advanced air mobility and related airport economic development opportunities.
Thank you. Mayor, council? This was a future agenda item requested by Councilman Schindler. Staff did a little bit of kind of research and background, and it's just recommended that council provide direction to staff on whether to research and pursue potential opportunities at the airport related to advanced air mobility. And also looking at the Eaglefield ASKA initiatives that have been kind of discussed among several agencies within the valley recently. In terms of advanced air mobility trends, according to the FAA and industrial research, electric vertical takeoff and landing, they call them E-vehicle, aircraft in advanced air mobility infrastructure is rapidly moving from concept to reality. Airports across the nation are beginning to evaluate how their facilities could support these advanced air mobility operations, charging infrastructure, and partnerships with private sector innovators. The FAA and US Department of Transportation have also recently announced new recreational aviation investments and policy improvements to expand aviation accessibility and modernize these facilities. This position, this positions municipal airports like ours to consider aligning with federal initiatives and explore grant opportunities for infrastructure upgrades. In addition, Eaglefield Airport LLC in partnership with ASKA, it's the world's first drive-and-fly hybrid vehicle company. Myself and the mayor have met the owner of the company at a couple events. And they've been relatively active in terms of discussing and proposing some opportunities in the valley. They see the Central Valley as a huge opportunity for this expansion. In terms of jobs and investment, they're looking at creating two thousand plus direct and three thousand indirect jobs. Hundred and fifty million in annual wages, up to two billion in private investment potential. So there's a lot of investment. These companies come out of the Silicon Valley, but they're actually looking at trying to invest in the Central Valley, enhance workforce. I know they've been working with the local community colleges and the local schools to enhance workforce development. They, they're looking, and they're also looking to strategically, strategically place themselves in various areas around the valley as well, not just in one location. So, you know, the different types of infrastructure that they'd be looking at. And so we just want to kind of get direction from the council, see if the council's interested in at least allowing staff the ability to continue to engage in conversation, see if there's something that fits. I know there's some big caveats to this process in terms of at least this Eaglefield partnership, is that they're, they're looking for support at the state level to really reduce the permit process and make it easier to build quickly, because investors want to spend money quickly, and they want to see the, the infrastructure built quickly. And so we can, we do have resources, we have our lobbyists, we have other resources that we currently have at our disposal to be able to assist in that process. So we're just gonna be looking for some direction from council related to that. And then it's also looking at engaging with the FAA and US Department of Transportation to assess the eligibility for the AAM infrastructure pilot programs and recreational aviation grants. So kind of looking into that, working with our grant, our lobbyists, working with our, our grant research consultants to see what opportunities there are. In addition, looking at the land that we currently have at the airport and how we can try and expand development out at the airport. I know that's kind of been a priority that's come out of our strategic planning efforts. And I, obviously, in conversations with individual council members, we see that that's, that's definitely an interest to take advantage of some of this emerging technology with the administration that's highly supportive of it as well. So with that, we're just looking for council's direction. This isn't gonna happen overnight, but we definitely want to make sure we're spending our time and resources on meaningful items that the council as a whole wants staff working on.
Counsel?
I think it's a great idea. I think, I think getting, nailing something right now would be very perfect. We could start maybe by securing wildlife. All those permits, usually that's what keeps us from building a lot of stuff. I think getting on the boat with this technology is one thing that we could look forward. I think it's a great, great investment, a great idea to put our little airport over there. Not only that, we don't have that much air traffic around us. So, you know, proposing something that we could be, you know, one of the first or, you know, evolution in it would be a great, great plan. I see a lot of potential in our airport. Not only that, that we're, you know, halfway from two major cities. And I think making our little town your airport priority would be perfect. I think it's a go for me.
Yeah, I, I agree. I say pursue this aggressively. You know, I mean, California is a hard enough state to exist in, especially being an oil town. If you can do something that appeals to their grain side, this is all over that, so.
Can you also see if there's an option sooner than later, but to expand the actual footprint of the entire property out there? And probably purchase more so we can expand a little bit more?
Yeah, we've actually been doing a little bit of research. The city does own some other property throughout the, kind of the area that the city purchased years ago as part of the Habitat Conservation Plan. There are some properties that are actually in conservation easements, but there's also some property, I think, that we have that are, that are not in easements because the Habitat Conservation Plan was never completed. So there was some land that was identified, but there's some land that's not. So we can, we can kind of do some research, talk with our planning consultants that are kind of highly versed in SEQA. And in terms of habitat easements and restrictions to see, because we know we have a lot of restrictions around the airport. So then to kind of open the envelope of the airport, we placed a lot of land directly adjacent to the airport within habitat conservation easements to offset the land that we purchased for the new airport. So we can look into that, and if there's options where we can actually transfer that, those easements to other locations and allow us some more flexibility to expand directly around the airport property.
So I'll agree with everyone, and then also echoing Councilman Schindler's need for the aggressiveness on this. I think this is something that, this exact company may or may not be able to get done, but the idea being pushed forward and those behind it will push this effort into reality. And I think that we need to be those people because we have a perfect scenario where we have an airport that's really not being used for a whole bunch, and we're looking for economic development opportunities. And we're strategically placed in a great spot for that. And having personally talked to the, the guy with, has the idea with the flying cars, he thought he was gonna just come into California and do it. He said they just did it in Alabama, or wherever he was at. He said, "I just thought we were gonna come in and do it," and then I'm here, and this was at Congressman Gray's event. And he said, "And how come the government is stopping me everywhere I go?" And Congressman Gray said, "Because this is California." He said, "And unfortunately, sometimes we have laws to protect the environment, but sometimes those laws are also what keep us from moving forward," because obviously, the, the, a lot of those things that they were talking about were electric vehicles. You know, and so there is an idea to move, to move this forward, and I, I myself have been, you know, pushing and talking. So I would also like if the city could set up maybe a meeting with myself and maybe one other council member, probably Councilman Schindler, since he's been spearheading the airport event along with Mr. Hedgecock, but if we, we can probably only take two. So if you could make a thing with Townsend, and then we can work something in Sacramento to go and talk to the people up there. You could set that up and then aggressively move towards with this. I mean, is the council okay with myself and Mr. Schindler? Yep, moving forward and, yeah? Do you just need direction?
Yeah, that's enough.
Okay, perfect. All right, and we are going to, since we did start early at 5:30, and it's been the standard that we do start at six. So I think some people missed their opportunity for public comment, but in always wanting to be transparent to the public and giving opportunity, I'd like to, we're going to offer another section for public comment for anyone who would like to speak. We would just like if you would come up to the lectern and state your name.
Hi, I'm Chris Cushman. I live at 267 Jackson for forty-plus years. I know the violation was there, it's true, but it's the way the violation went about. Me and my husband had solar and a new roof put on our house. City cam out inspected, I gave you a photo. That photo is a picture from our roof to our neighbor's yard. The young man had a dangerous animal, as you call him, it's a goat. The goat has been relocated to our ranch property up the canyon. But the idea, how they went about it, you're causing animosity between neighbors now because you said, "Somebody complained." But the picture was taken on my roof into their backyard. That's what I have concerns about. We try to be nice neighbors and it doesn't, it doesn't help the neighbor. That's all I, I wanted to say.
Can you clarify that again? Just to let you know, like, in, in, in public comment, we can't actually do anything.
I understand, I understand.
I do want to hear it. I want to clar, I want to have you clarify that again for me, because I, I want to make sure I heard it correctly.
City inspector, city inspector came out to inspect our new solar and our roof. The picture you have there is from my roof. I've never been on my roof to see the new roof or the solar. They took a picture of our neighbor's backyard and the dangerous animal in there, which is a, I call it a sheep. The kids call it a goat, it's their pet, and they were given a citation to have it removed. It has been removed as of this week to the family ranch for us to take care of. But this is the idea how they went about it. Said, "Somebody complained." I didn't complain. I checked with the neighbor next door, he never complained. So the complaint was, I'm thinking the picture you took from my roof, and that's not the way you do, because then you have neighbors disagreeing with each other. Me and my husband were eating dinner when the young lady knocked on our door and said, "Chris, did you take this complaint about our goat and showed me the picture?" That's what I'm concerned about. Then you cause neighbors to have animosity between each other.
And have you followed up with the city on this by chance?
No, I just found out that you can find and file a complaint, which I probably will. I think I'll even go as far as looking to see what I could do for this little boy to make it a emotional support animal. And then what can you do then? I'm gonna take them to our ranch when they want to see this goat. But I shouldn't have to do that.
Would you like city staff to follow up with you, if you could leave your information?
I, I can contact the city staff. I have a few friends who work for, I worked for the city for twenty years myself.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry. Just trying to do whatever we can.
No, no, thank you. I just wanted you guys to be aware how a complaint was made. And I, it was all, I think, the wrong way, because I think there's ordinance about taking pictures in other people, in your backyards, a fenced backyard. So that's my concern, because, I mean, it, it's causing problems between neighbors, and that's not right.
Well, we appreciate you coming and
Well, thank you.
Making us, making us aware of this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any other public comments, before I close public comments? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna move on to announcements, city manager's announcements.
Just one, just again, remind everybody, next Saturday, we have our first annual Wings Over the West Side Air Show from ten to two. Tickets are being sold locally, local businesses. We also have, you can also purchase tickets online as well. So, but we hope to see everybody out there.
I got a question. I got a message, just, they wanted...
I have a question. I got a message, just, they wanted to see if it's too, if it's too late for them to put a vendor?
We're pretty much locked in on vendors.
I don't know if you received the message, but they're like an energy drink, lemonade kind of thing?
Food vendors, we've already submitted everything to the health department already.
Okay, okay, so, okay. All right, okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Councilmember's announcements and reports? Anything?
Yeah, I do. It's also going to lead to a future agenda item as well. As of right now, the end, by the end of November, I will be stepping down as councilman for the city. I am actually going to be moving out of state. So I'd like to, future gen item is open up applications right away, so we can get some applicants in and see about appointing somebody by the first meeting in November, if possible. If not, maybe a special meeting in the middle of the month, in November, for approval.
Yeah, we can, we can at least, at the next council meeting in October, give the council the option. Excuse me, and then it'll be up to council as a whole what to do to appoint. It will have a couple options. It also depends on when your term is up, what the options are. The state law gives us some kind of options, so I'll present those to the, excuse me, to the council at the first meeting in October, and we'll let you know, but...
Well, my term has another three years.
Yeah, so it will, that's really important, because what the council can do and how long that appointment, if the council wants to appoint, how long that will last. Because in that case, depending on the timelines, what will probably happen is they'll fulfill the first half of your term, and then there'll have to be an election for the second half.
Just like what we had to do with, with Rogers, yeah?
Correct.
And a question on that. So I know that we are trying to build the process into the code of conduct. Will the code of conduct be ready by the October 2nd meeting? Or no? If, if not, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, as long as you guys don't change it.
I mean, well, you did get a, because that would, that would solidify the process in writing at that point in time. So if we voted on that first, then we wouldn't have to go into greater detail. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys wanted to stick with that process, I mean, you, you have the options no matter what. I mean, the council handbook is not law. It's what you guys have agreed upon.
Right.
So as long as you don't conflict, do something that conflicts with the state law, you can do whatever you like.
Okay. Any other councilmembers who have reports?
I just want to say thank you and for the streets that are being done. You know, thank you for being patient with the public. I know it's been hard with, you know, getting people to move their vehicles, but it's been looking good, and I'm glad they're all working, and everything's going great, and thank you.
Any other councilmembers' reports? No. City treasurer?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time. Okey-dokey. All right, so under mayor's announcements, I did get on, I think it's KC 24, the meeting with the mayor's. I was on at, I think it was, you know, they did it at noon. I don't know when they're going to air it. They may have aired it live. But the entire thing was promotioned for the, for the air show. And then also to let them know the different economic things that we're doing in Kalinga. And we are doing a lot of stuff. Some of it is, you know, being done as infrastructure projects. We're doing a lot of streets that are getting fixed. A lot of the lighting programs that we're doing, a lot, the animal shelter, the splash pad, you know, the, the outdoor food court, you know, the, the concepts for all of these things moving forward. The city has quite their plate full with quite a lot of stuff, and that all came on top of, or included in the strategic plan, which is a huge list that's available online, that people can see. It's, it's a monstrous list. And so it's amazing the type of things that we've already got done and what we're moving forward with. And I know that because unfortunately, it's not what everyone wants, which is a Ross and a grocery outlet and a Five Below, which is me as well. But we are doing things, and the city is doing things, and I just want to say that I really appreciate that. And I also just want to say that that it'll, it'll be sad to see Mayor Pro Tim leave, because he's done such a great job. And so I also, once, we're going to move to future agenda items next, so I'll have a future agenda item onto that as well. So those are my announcements. So we're going to move to future gen items. Anybody? No? So I just want to make sure that we work with Mayor Pro Tim Horn, and that we also create some kind of celebratory deal. And, and, and I'll get together with you to decide, like, exactly what and how. But I want to make sure that we work with him to make sure that, that he's here and that we, we get it done. That way that we don't have an issue where he's resigning and leaving, and we still haven't done the celebration for him being, doing what he's done, so.
Is there an estimate, Councilman Horn? Will you be here the first meeting in November?
I will be leaving Kalinga November 24th.
Okay, so at least, at least possibly through the first meeting in November, and we traditionally cancel the second one, but...
No, it'll, yeah, I'll be here until, like I said, at least the first, and if we have a special, probably the special.
Okay.
But I won't be out of here until everything's done. I'd like to be here to actually help appoint the new.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right, we have a couple of closed session items, conference with labor negotiators, and then real property negotiations. Do we, are we going to be?
We don't expect to report now.
My tongue is tied. Reporting anything out?
No, sir.
No, okay. All right, with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.